I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to announce that this meeting is being recorded and ask if there's anyone in the audience who is also recording this meeting. Seeing none, if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business is public comment, and we have Ellen Gabrie, our town clerk. Good evening.
Good evening. I'd like to say a few words about the Boston Post cane. The Boston Post newspaper distributed 692 canes throughout New England in 1909. It was originally presented to the oldest male citizen, but in 1921 when women were voted independents, it was then presented to the oldest citizen in each town. The Boston Post went out of business in 1956, and over the years, many of these canes were lost. Auburn is very fortunate to have located the Auburn cane, which is on display at the Auburn Historical Museum. The current criteria to determine the oldest citizen is that a person meet all of the following: be listed on the town census, be registered to vote, and be a resident for more than 10 years. With the recent death of Lincoln Walcott, who held this designation, I did search for the oldest resident that fit the criteria. I've determined that this oldest citizen is Lillian M. Smalski. She's a longtime resident of Exeter Drive in Auburn, and it currently resides at the Life Care Center. The center is holding a reception for her on May 4th at 2:00 p.m., at which time she will be presented with a certificate. Ken Ethia will present a duplicate cane, and the original Auburn cane will be used for pictures and then returned to the Auburn Museum for display. I thought this would be of interest to the town and the selectmen.
Absolutely, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Burney, who wants to speak about the open space plan.
Hello, all.
Good evening.
So hopefully today, oh, you're getting them right now. Here is a copy of the 2014 draft open space and recreation plan. This has taken a few years. We have finalized it. You'll see some maps in there. We are holding a forum on April 30th, which is a Wednesday night at 7:00 p.m., to discuss this plan. Any comments, suggestions, additions, detractions prior to submitting it to the state? Our hope is to submit it before the end of May. So what we'll do is we'll take all input from the April 30th discussion, make changes that make sense to be made, send it into the state, and wait for their review and comment on what's in the plan and to make any changes. Again, that's April 30th, 7:00 p.m. It will be in this room. The plan is not on the website this evening. It will be first thing Wednesday morning. It will both be on the Open Space Committee page and on the Planning Division page, and if somebody is really dying for a hard copy, they can contact my office, and we'll make the copies at nominal charge.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burney. We also, excuse me, have Darlene Coyle, who wants to speak about the Household Hazardous Waste Day. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Just wanted to inform the board and the residents in Auburn that we will be having a Household Hazardous Waste Day. That's going to be Saturday, May 3rd, from 9:00 to 12:00. We're going to have it at the Hogan Ice Arena, as we have had the hazardous waste days there previously. The hazardous waste drop-off will be free for residents of Auburn. However, the, we do have a CRT electronics collection that the Masons will be doing for their charitable organization, so they'll be taking small donations for some of the items, such as TVs, electronics, cameras, phones, radios. So they'll be, they'll be operating that there as well. We additionally will have propane tanks, tires. We are going to be accepting clothing, textiles, and mercury, all types of mercury bulbs, and button cell batteries and so forth. So again, we encourage all the residents in Auburn start clearing out now. We'd love to see them on Saturday, May 3rd, from 9:00 to 12:00, down at the Hogan Ice Arena, 403 Oxford Street. If they have any questions or concerns, they can give us a call at the Board of Health office, and we'll be able to field those. Thank you so much.
Okay, I think Mr. Grossman had a question.
Yes, sir.
I didn't hear when you gave the listing. Does that include paint?
It does include paint, yes. It's oil-based paint, paint thinners. We are encouraging residents, if they have latex paint, latex paint is actually not a hazardous waste. We would encourage people to dry out latex paint, and you can actually put it in the regular trash. A lot of people come with latex paint. It actually drives up our cost. So if, if people can eliminate latex paint from this hazardous waste, that would be much appreciated. Again, oil-based paints, paint thinners, if you've got carb, car oil, gasoline, any of those liquids, pesticides, those are all things that we want to see at this hazardous waste, to keep them out of the waste stream, and, you know, save our groundwater.
Mr. Smontian.
Is that list available somewhere for people who...
Yes, this list actually is on the website, and it should be on the Cable Access channel as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Bill Coyle, who wants to give us an update on a recent DOT road project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board, I'd like to update the, the town also on the Chapter 90 and the town roadway improvement projects as well. Today, the town's contractor, PJ Albert, began construction on Idlewood Drive, Maria Rav, Colonial Road, and Little Drive. It's an entire neighborhood. Upon completion of that neighborhood, they will be moving on to Hampton Street from Elmwood Street to the city line, Millbury Street from Route 20 to the Millbury Town Line, Mill Street from Millbury Street to Route 20, and Gilbert Way from Bond Street to the Millbury Town Line. Upon completion of this project, the DPW, myself and the Assistant Town Engineer will begin working on the next round of projects to hopefully go out to bid this summer, and with anticipation of construction starting late summer, early fall as well. In addition to these projects, the town recently, last week, found out that we had a project that we had requested for construction. I've mentioned it, I think, in the past, but we've been waiting for some time now to go, for it to go before Mass DOT. It's a reconstruction of Auburn Street from Central Square to I-290, including new traffic signals and additional sidewalk from Central Square to, to Brotherton Way. That project value is $2 million. That was approved by Mass DOT last week for, for funding. We now need to get it on what's called the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program, which can take a couple of years, but this was a very important milestone for us, and we would start with working on the design of the project and moving forward, and hopefully getting that onto the TIP for funding, which is 80% federal funds and 20% state funds as well. We would be responsible for designing the project. In addition, we were also notified last week that Mass DOT is going to be milling and resurfacing Route 20, just, beginning just west of Appleton Road and proceeding to the Home Depot 395 area. This project just came about recently due to additional funds that they had available, and we were approached by Mass DOT with their interest to move forward with that project. It's actually going to be starting tomorrow night. It's going to be night work with, from 7:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. in the morning. Just going to be milling and resurfacing of that as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions? Mr. Smontian.
So if they're, if they're redoing that stretch of Route 20, then I would assume that no time in the near future, they would have any plans to do that covert over by Camp Gleason, right? Because they're not going to tear up a road. They just did.
Yeah, I don't foresee that any time in, in the near future. Initially, they had expressed an interest of milling the entire gap from where the current project, the 1220 project that they're working on, which terminates around Pub 99 and going to just beyond South Street to where the Auburn Racquetball Club, or former club was. That would complete the entire section of Route 20, but due to funding, they may not be to go to that, to that easternmost limit. It may be that they will stop at, in the area of 395. So that particular location they're referring to wouldn't be covered under this portion, but it also depends on availability of funds. They did mention that there is a possibility that they would continue with the project, but we have discussed that covert with them on several occasions, and the estimate to replace it was over $1 million, and I think they felt that, given, given the cost of the project, they didn't foresee that happening in, in their future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. The next item we have is a transfer of license and location. Yus Enterprises Incorporated doing business as Jack's Variety for 567 Southbridge Street from Pointless Forest Enterprises, Inc., 321 Southbridge Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? The applicant is here. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we have the, Mrs. Brotherton.
Yes, I would just like to disclose that the attorney for this gentleman is, is my nephew. I have no financial interest in, in the facility, and papers will be submitted for the town clerk tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have your application, all the paperwork. If you could just first give your name for the record and tell us why you're here tonight.
John Holstrom.
Okay.
I'm here to get a transfer of a beer and wine license from Pointless Forest Enterprises Doing Businesses Jewelry Square Quick Stop to Yus Enterprises, Inc., Doing Businesses Jack's Variety, 567 Southbridge Street.
Okay. So the last time you were before us, it was a transfer to another location. Is, is it my understanding that that deal, shall we say, fell through? So, so you've held the license, the business isn't open, you've held the license, and now you're proposing to transfer it to the new location at Heritage Plaza?
Right.
And, and when do you expect to open?
Wednesday this week. Yes.
Mr. Smontian.
I just, I have a question before we, and, and there may be some relevance. Did you grow up at 5 Knipmuck Street in Worcester?
I did.
Okay, so we were next door neighbors for a number of years. Not that it probably matters, but just for the sake of...
Disclosure.
I can't see the, oh my God, yeah, how you doing?
I thought it was you. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Family.
Good, we can talk.
We have a hearing.
Sorry, boss.
Okay, so you can make the disclosure that you're former neighbors and you have no financial interest.
Knew each other for a number of years, but I have no financial interest whatsoever in this.
Okay.
You sure you don't want a couple of bucks?
Don't even joke about it.
Okay, so was that all that you had right now?
Nope, that's it. I just, I, I thought it was him.
Okay, so are there questions regarding the license transfer? Mr. Grossman.
Yes, I had the opportunity to stop in this morning to see the store.
Thank you.
What's shown around and so on. Did you get your beer and wine delivery?
No, beer and wine delivery won't come until after the license.
Okay, and, and the gentleman that was there, I believe, is also going to be working in the store, and is he going to be TIP certified?
Scott, yes, he'll be TIP certified. Everyone that works there will be TIP certified and over 18.
In time for reopening, okay.
Okay. And what will, what will be your store policy regarding carding? Will you card everyone? Will you, I mean, some places card everyone?
Someone came in, no, I wouldn't. If it's questionable, yes. I usually, I look at someone, if they're bald, gray hair, I kind of figure they're 21.
Okay.
And anybody else is going to get carded.
Okay, so I've, I've said this to, to past applicants, transfers, and license holders. We do have businesses in town who make it a practice to card everyone, even if they are the person you just referred to, gray-haired or no hair, and clearly, you know, a senior. If it's a good practice, if you card everyone, no one will slip through.
Yeah.
No one will slip through, and you won't be before us for a violation, potential violation of your license where we'll have to take action. So we can't require you to do that, but I think I've seen it happen in other businesses in Auburn, and I think it's a good practice. Just have to put a sign on your door, "We card everyone."
Everyone.
And that's up to you, but the Auburn Police do, do these things as, you know, I'm sure you are aware, you had a license in the past.
I had the license for about a year and a half, too.
Yep.
Nobody slipped through.
Yep.
Because once you say that, somebody's going to attempt.
Well, we hope not. Are there any other questions on this license? Is there any public comment on this license?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Is there a motion on the transfer?
Make a motion to approve the transfer of the license and location, provided all the applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license subject to all conditions stated upon it and failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Good luck in your new location.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, Jack.
Thank you. Okay. So because we've already had this on the agenda, and he's already waited, I would entertain a motion to move up Agenda Item 8A, the greens fees and membership fees of Packer Golf Course.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? So this was on a previous agenda, and board members had asked for, you may come up to the microphone, we had asked for some additional information.
Through the chair, thank you for moving this item up. I want to reintroduce Joe Ekstrom from Johnson Golf Management, who's back with us tonight, and to point out a couple of things that have been put into your packet this week. We had a meeting last week with the management team at Johnson and went over some of the information, actually, all of the information that this, the board was looking for with regard to the fees. I want to point out a couple of things. I put an Excel chart in here, and from that Excel chart, you can see, as the board had requested, to see what the fees were from 2010 forward to 2014, so that's five seasons. The column on the far right is actually, the label didn't come out, but it's 2013 to 2014 percentage increase in the nine holes and percentage increase in the 18 holes. For some reason, that just got chopped off when we copied it.
Thirteen to fourteen?
Yes, thirteen to fourteen. So that's the one-year increase from last season to this season. And if you look down, you can see on the nine holes, on the first one, the junior, senior, is 6.25% increase on the nine holes, but it's actually a 6.45% decrease on the 18 holes. So it's about, it's a wash on that one. The, the weekday for adults is 5.88% increase on nine holes and 3.23% on 18 holes for an average of around four, and no increase on the weekend and holiday rates. So the average increase for nine holes is 4.04%, and for 18 holes is minus 1.08%. That's the one year. Since the board had asked to look back on the five seasons, that is below that. You will see on the bottom, the two boxes on the bottom, you can see the nine holes and the 18 holes, and you can see the average annual over those periods ranges from, on the, let's see, on the nine holes, from two point, a low of 2.2% increase to a high of 2.67% in the aggregate over the, that's the average for the five years, and a 1.88% to a 2.31% on the 18 holes. So over five years, it's been very insignificant increase. The second page that I just want to point to, this was a request by this board for information, which has been provided to you on the seasons pass. The, there are a couple of new categories here, and I also want to point out, and I'm sure Mr. Ekstrom can correct me if I'm wrong, but the junior pass now has been increased. It used to be a five-day weekday pass, and the junior pass now includes Saturdays and Sundays after 2:00 p.m.
Correct.
So they're getting additional playing time, so there is, you know, an increase on the junior fee, but on a daily basis, it's actually a decrease because now it's a seven-day pass as opposed to a five-day pass. So this should have all the information. I believe one of the board members asked for specials. The bottom paragraph on the second page does mention some of the specials, but as Mr. Ekstrom said, they change all the time, so it's very hard to let you know what all the specials are. It depends, they're constantly running.
That's currently the special now. It's, it's 14 for weekday before 1:00. And then it's, I think it's 18 after 2:00 on weekends, so we identify the slow times and try to push the specials for those times.
Are there any member comments or questions with this additional information?
Through the chair, I want to also point out that the town administration has reviewed this, myself, Ed Keznovich, the CFO, and Bill Coyle, the DPW director. We've looked at all their golf course rates. We feel that this is in keeping with other municipal courses. The rates and the fees are consistent with other courses. I think the nice feature that you've now added, correct me if I'm wrong, is this the first year that you can now use the seasons pass for golf here and in Westboro as well?
That's correct, yes, it's a dual membership for two golf courses, so it's a, it's an additional value, which I think, hopefully, they'll enjoy. And we did add a couple of new memberships to husband and wife and a family. So if a husband and wife wanted to join before, they would have been paying $25.50, and now there's a husband and wife membership, and it's $18.75, so a significant deal there. And the family, you can have as many kids play as you, you know, if you have three or four kids, it's a, it's a big savings, so.
Mr. Grossman?
Yes, once this is passed, is this all going to be posted?
Yep.
The clubhouse?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smontian?
Just, um, because we've done, this has spread out over a few weeks, just, the facility is not changing though, right? As far as what's currently there, the clubhouse and all that, this facility isn't changing this time, right? And at Indian Meadows, is that, that's not part of the golf course, right? The facility they have over there?
The, the function facility?
Yeah.
No, that's correct. Yeah, no, that's completely separate, right?
And it's just that small clubhouse over there?
Yeah, it's the pro shop. It's a pro shop, it's not even a clubhouse. That's correct, yes.
Thanks.
Yep.
And I'll just confirm with the manager that these price increases are what's allowed within the contract?
Through the chair, the contract allows for a 5% price increase, so that's why I want to show you what it is on an individual category as well as in the aggregate category. The contract isn't that specific to say that the 5% couldn't be on individual categories, so I did want to show you. If you look at the nine hole and the 18 hole, I think it's fair to take the aggregate of the two because you have to look at both prices, you can't just look at one. So if you're looking at the nine hole, there is an increase of 6.25%, which does exceed the 5% on the nine, but there's a decrease of the 6.45%, and there's also the added two extra days. So on a daily basis, you know, it's, it's not reflecting, it's just purely in the numbers, but on a daily basis, the price actually went down on the junior senior pass for the amount of days. The 5.88% on the adult, again, that's an increase on the nine holes, but it's only a 3% increase on the 18 holes. So that's the average of four. So that's why I thought, in all fairness, I should show you what it was individually, but also show you that in the aggregate and on the average, you're looking at a nine-hole increase overall of 4.04% and an 18-hole of minus 1.8%.
Just, just for my, for my own benefit, do you have, do you have an idea of how many, how many players average nine holes and how many average 18?
I don't have an exact, but the vast majority are nine holes.
The vast majority are nine holes. So, so the increase, although we're offering more for the 18 holes and more, more time, the increase is affecting significantly the, the average player?
Yeah. The, the reason it's over 5% for the, for the nine holes is because it's just a dollar, you know, you can't, it's hard to charge an extra 85 cents or whatever it would come out to be. If we stayed, stayed right at 5%, it would end up being 85 cents. So to round it up to a dollar brings it up to the 6%. So that's, that's how it arrived at that. It's, it's hard to go in increments less than, you know, less than a dollar. And the problem is if we, if you don't do that, then it's year to year, like you can see, a few years, we flatlined where we didn't go up, and you never really get to that 5% that way. So you have to go back and kind of figure out the, the few years combined, if that makes any sense, I don't know.
Through the chair, that is why we, because the board, I think, was trying to get to that. We showed you what the average increase was over a five-year period, because as you can see, in different categories, there were years that they flatlined and did not do anything. So in the aggregate, they're well under, they're under 2.5% primarily in the aggregate And I should point out that the contract, I believe, does not speak to the seasons pass.
That's the 5% part, right.
It, it just speaks to the greens fees.
If you look at the five-year history of the season pass, the, it's actually gone, for the most part, has gone down for the, for the weekday and the seven day. In, in five years, it's gone down $5 for the weekday, and it's gone down $20 for the seven day. So that's over five years, it's actually gone down in total.
I just have one for the manager. How long does this contract address this increase? What's the contract? I, I know we had a presentation a couple of weeks ago. This is through...
The contract expires December 30th, December of 2015, so a little less than two years from now.
Okay, so typically this season and another season. Did you have something, Mr. Smontian?
And I, maybe last time I, was there something on, on the presentation last time? Do you, because I was, I was looking at, at the specials, and do you, do you have a different rate for like a twilight, you know, weekdays or something?
On weekends, we have a twilight rate, and during the week, we have specials before 1:00 o'clock.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So like I said before, we try to identify the slower times to get, to get more people in, and, you know, that's the whole purpose of the special.
So if you get, you know, like that after work, people know they're not going to get in nine, they're trying to get in like four or five holes?
We've offered them, and like, like Julie said, that we reserve that right to offer it if, if we feel that's, yeah.
I was...
They do fluctuate and vary.
I thought I had seen it before.
Excuse me, we just can't keep talking over each other.
I'm terrible at that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you have something else, Mr. Smontian?
That's it.
Anything else on this? So the board would need to take action on this? Just take a vote to accept the fees? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the fees, as stated, along with the specials as listed.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Smontian?
The season pass, that's everything? Because you just said fees.
As presented, yeah.
As presented.
Then I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or voted? Thanks for coming back the second time.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Bye now.
So we are under communication, so again, and I believe that I saw all selectmen CC'd on this request as well. We have a request from Terry Burke Dotson to come before the board again to, you know, another request to speak on Glass Steagall. As I stated at the last request, this is a federal issue. Ms. Burke Dotson is not an Auburn resident who has requested this. The request is for our federal legislators to ask them to support this, which they all do. And finally, Ms. Burke Dotson is an announced candidate for state representative, and may, with this as her issue, and it may not be the best thing to invite her in to speak on her issue. Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, I remember this coming back to us before, and yes, it is a, a federal issue. I remember this coming back to us before, and yes, it is a federal issue. It does not direct the town effectively. Wow. Does not affect the town directly. And so my feeling is we shouldn't be inviting anybody into doing anything like that. So that would be my motion is to decline the request.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Simoneon, another discussion?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think just simply, you know, every year, we've kind of set a precedent because we typically don't take a vote on the, we don't even vote on the UN resolution that we receive every year. So I don't even know if a motion is in order, but if...
Well, because she's contacted us by email twice. I think that we need to respond to Ms. Burke Dotson and let her know that the Board of Selectmen will not give her, you know, give her an opportunity to speak before the board, and that the board will not entertain any further requests to speak on this subject. So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Also, under communications, we have an email from Pat Bukowski stating that Betty Gaines will celebrate her ninetieth birthday. It was this Sunday, so it's gone by. Would it be possible to recognize this very special event? She's forwarded some background information, which I'd just like to read that first page. Friend to those in need, community advocate, RSVP volunteer. Tall order to fill, not at all. When a person has served her community as a town meeting member, worked on elections, supported the party of her choice, served on numerous committees to analyze and assess local needs, a profile emerges. Her name is Betty Gaines. Betty serves in so many different ways. As now, as the now retired director of the Auburn Senior Center, Betty said, "I would often prepare homemade meals, freeze them for anyone needing an extra meal. Prior to the existing adult daycare programs, I would watch out for seniors needing a place to stay for the day, and would see that they had a little something for breakfast," according to Betty. Betty is a great trivia pursuit player, using this opportunity, as she says, to connect with everyone. Betty continues to serve on the Auburn Housing Authority Board, giving her total support to all of their programs and has done so far for twenty-five years. She said, "I look out for the best interest in everyone." I also know that there are times when a person needs a helping hand. Life can get very complicated. The Auburn Senior Center has been renamed after her closest friend, Lorraine Nordgren. Betty presently serves as the treasurer for the Council on Aging at the Lorraine Glick-Nordgren Senior Center. She has been named the honorary chairman of the thirtieth anniversary festivities to be held at the Senior Center later this year. Betty also serves as a member of FASC, the Friends Group, at the center. Betty's knowledge of so many seniors is invaluable. As a person in charge of the memorial fund, Betty makes sure all seniors are remembered for their volunteer efforts on behalf of the Auburn community. Betty says, "When you live in the community, you have a responsibility to help in whatever way you can." So those kind words were sent by Pat Bukowski. So certainly, I think that, you know, on behalf of the board, we wish Betty a very happy ninetieth birthday. Mr. Grossman?
I'd like to make a motion that we, as a board, have a proclamation prepared and sent to her or brought to her upon, it's already her ninetieth, but presented to her as soon as possible.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you. Happy birthday, Betty. Under Board of Selectmen, general items in your packet, we have the letter to the manager. We also have the manager's self-evaluation and the evaluation of the Board of Selectmen. I, along with Vice Chairman Grossman, met with the town manager to give her her scores. The evaluation was based on the approved evaluation form and four additional three-year town manager goals. The average Board of Selectmen score for the evaluation form ranged from three-point-seven-five to a perfect five and ranged from four-point-oh to a five for the four goals. Individual selectmen's goals ranged from a low of three-point-eight-eight to a high of a perfect five. At this point, I think it would be appropriate for individual selectmen to comment on their evaluation and any comments they may have. I'm going to start with Mr. Holstrom and work this way. Mr. Holstrom, you have your comments available in the packet?
In three short years, Auburn's charter change to town manager former government has proven itself worthy with progress, improvements in the delivery of services, and efficiency of operations. In Julie's tenure as manager, she has maximized the town's resources and significantly decreased costs in healthcare. Legal fees have been dramatically reduced due to her successful negotiations of labor contracts. She continues to research programs and grants that will provide needed and improved services and equipment for the town. With the assistance and sustained efforts of Julie and her team, the town has benefited in savings, equipment, maintenance, and repair programs, efficiency of departmental operations, and public communications and activities, just to name a few. The Board of Selectmen has received informative, detailed direction from the town manager, and this has greatly benefited the board's decision-making process. With the programs, policies, and fiscally sound operation of the town, Auburn has achieved goals and objectives that allow us to move forward to provide the needed services to the residents. That is all made possible by the direction and leadership of Julie Jacobson and the diligence and hard work of her department heads and their respective employees. Financial stability has been realized by the fiscally conservative financial policies that have set the guidelines for the progress through savings. Projects and capital improvements that have been financed through bonding in the past will in the future be paid for through local funding and save in interest costs. The budget process continues to be an effective, cumulative, and agreeable process to town departments, town administration, and the finance committee through continuous communication. The town manager has overseen this process and has revised the process as needed. In addition, Julie has applied for and the town has accepted many grants that totaled one-hundred-and-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. In addition, regional grants totaling two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars were shared with several communities. The town realized savings in the operational budget by receiving these grants, which allowed services to continue to be provided to the residents. Julie has continued to work closely with the Chamber of Commerce, actively participates as a policy board member of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and continues discussions with the Business Roundtable. This networking provides a valuable resource to identify programs that will benefit the town through efficiency of programs and in turn, financial saving and stability. The formulation of a facilities management division and the savings realized in labor costs are noteworthy. I had a concern with regard to building maintenance. After meeting with Julie, I find that the efforts to make improvements to and maintain town facilities continue through a comprehensive and detailed plan developed by Julie and her team. Assistance has been rendered to the school department with some projects by this division, and establishing this department has made for a very cooperative work environment for employees. It has been three years since Julie has become Auburn's town manager. Julie continues to serve our town well by working closely with all levels of town government to provide improved and enhanced services to the public. Her active participation in governmental and commercial and commerce organizations has resulted in Auburn becoming a business-friendly and economically sound community, which is the envy of towns in southern Worcester County. Julie continues her pursuit of progressive and fiscally responsible town management, which benefits us all as town residents. My sincerest thanks to Julie Jacobson and her team for moving the town of Auburn forward expeditiously and responsibly. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Mr. Holstrom.
Mrs. Spurletin?
It was a pleasure, Madam Chair, to evaluate Julie Jacobson. It is once again my pleasure to evaluate Julie Jacobson as our town manager. It gives me great pleasure to recognize her ongoing attributes to our town as nothing less than distinguished in all of her categories. She continues to strive with competence, knowledge, perseverance, and her daily commitments and beyond. I look forward to working with Ms. Jacobson, and I wish her the best in her future endeavors.
Thank you, Mrs. Spurletin.
Mr. Simoneon?
I'm just going to make this quick, because really, nothing has changed for me year over year. I've, you know, I've basically used the same process that I've used, you know, tried and true business metrics that are used across various industries that I've seen, that I've been evaluated by and evaluated people who reported to me by. And I've, you know, as far as my evaluation of the town manager, it's better than satisfactory. I clearly identified things that I thought were done very well, exceptional, and things that I felt needed improvement. So hasn't changed, then it won't change. That's been my philosophy, and it will continue to be my philosophy.
Thank you, Mr. Simoneon.
Mr. Grossman?
Okay, maybe relatively brief. Mr. Holstrom covered a lot of what I was going to say. I'm not going to repeat it. But financial policies, which have been set in place over the past several years, by management in conjunction with this board and the finance committee, in turn, have saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars and will be in the near future, especially with our new bond rating and borrowings that we go out to in the late spring. I didn't give excellence on everything. No, I didn't give distinguished in everything, put it that way, because as far as I'm concerned, as good as Julie is, she is not perfect. And no one is perfect, and there's always room for a little improvement. So congratulations, Julie, on your evaluation.
Thank you. So I did, when we submitted our evaluations, I did submit written comments as well, so I will review those. But before I begin, is your self-evaluation on the town's website?
It is not.
I would request that you put that self-evaluation so the residents can go to the town's website and just see what, you know, the comprehensive self-evaluation that was done. So my comments are as follows. Town manager Julie Jacobson, two thousand and thirteen evaluation comments. Once again, I would like to note the level of depth and detail in Ms. Jacobson's self-evaluation. This detailed information was helpful in properly completing the evaluation. First, I would like to comment on the four goals. The first one was develop open space and recreation plan. As reported in the evaluation, much work has gone into this. It is apparent that this was a huge undertaking, and I look forward to the final review and presentation by the Open Space Committee for a public comment. Number two, develop a plan for the analysis, evaluation, and potential disposition of town properties. This, again, was an important undertaking. The comprehensive report notes that there was no policy in place. This new policy is guided by mass general law and the charter and must be handled properly in accordance to the law. This policy is clear as to that and allows the town to move forward in the disposition of town-owned properties. So clearly, that goal was met. The third goal was evaluate timeline for all bills and determine whether they can be staggered. The town manager presented a detailed report regarding the bill type, issue date, due date, and number of days to pay, the authority which determined the schedule, and whether there was any flexibility in billing. While the report may not have been what some had hoped for, there was a clear explanation to anyone who has questions regarding the billing. The fourth goal was evaluate evaluation of current package our golf course operations and analysis to determine feasibility of town operating the facility at the expiration of the current lease. The town manager presented a twenty-plus-page report with recommendation. It is clear that a remarkable amount of research and time went into this evaluation. Regarding the evaluation form, which is available also on the website, the manager was rated on relationship with the Board of Selectmen. Ms. Jacobson has always been available for Board of Selectmen concerns, comments, and questions. She has provided hundreds of email updates as well as telephone communications. She continues to provide board members guidance to ensure an issue before the board does not expose the town to liability. Again, all information presented to the board is backed up by facts and detailed numbers. I would point to the comprehensive analysis of legal costs. Regarding town administration, the next section on the evaluation, Ms. Jacobson is well-versed in mass general law, the town charter, bylaws, and votes of the Board of Selectmen. She manages the day-to-day operation of the town while balancing the interests of all. The facilities management unit put in place will ensure the buildings continue to be maintained regularly. Ms. Jacobson's involvement in the MMA, CMRPC, MMMA, which is a Mass Municipal Managers Association, is important in networking and keeping apprised of issues throughout the Commonwealth. Ms. Jacobson has always worked long days, nights, and weekends. The next item we evaluated on in the form was budget and finance. There is no denying the town of Auburn is in a strong fiscal condition. Working with CFO Ed Kazonovich, the town manager is able to look at the big picture and long-range financial stability. I also serve on the executive board of the Worcester County Selectmen's Association. While towns are taxing to the two-and-a-half allowed annually, they are still proposing overrides for their operating budgets. Auburn continues to provide quality services to residents without taxing to the maximum allowed. And the final category we evaluated on was community relations. Ms. Jacobson continues to work closely with the Economic Development Committee, the Business Roundtable, Chamber of Commerce, DCG, and the Business Roundtable to promote appropriate commercial growth. Ms. Jacobson is responsive to resident inquiries. She makes herself available for appointments with residents to address their concerns. The quarterly newsletter, Code Red, and public service announcements are all used to inform the public when needed. Residents appreciate Ms. Jacobson's attendance at town-sponsored events such as a summer concerts, Independence Day celebration, annual tree lighting, and other events. This gives residents an opportunity to interact with Ms. Jacobson in a less formal setting. I must say I'm continuously approached by residents, business owners, and even people in other communities telling me how fortunate we are to have town manager Julie Jacobson. I could not agree more, and I'm pleased that she recently signed a new contract so that she can continue the excellent work she is doing. Respectfully submitted, Doreen Goodrich. And I'll just say, I congratulate you on an excellent evaluation. I thank you for your self-evaluation, and I know that your entire team played a role in it. So if you want...
Well, thank you. I want to thank all the members of the Board of Selectmen. I want to thank you for your comments this evening, but more importantly, just for your guidance and support throughout the year. And I assure you that those who did make comments on the evaluation where you're looking for something different or an area of improvement, whether it's in the evaluation or just moving forward, I'm always willing to work with you on those areas that you feel are priorities. I want to thank the department heads and all of the employees for all their hard work. While it's my evaluation, I've said this before, but you're only as good as the people that you're surrounded by, and I'm surrounded by fantastic people. We are very lucky in this town to have the administration that we have and everyone we have that works for it. The department heads are tremendous. Many of them are here this evening, the division heads, the employees, they just do a great job. We all work together well. I want to give special thanks to Ed Kazonovich. I know the chair mentioned him, but it's really important to mention the assistant town manager and the CFO. You know, Ed is just, all the good he does for this town and for this town administration, I don't think anyone actually realizes everything that he does, but I do. And I thank him for everything. I want to thank all the board and commission members. I know there were a couple of them here this evening, but I want to thank everyone who donates their time to the town. It's very hard to get volunteers. We all know that. People are busy. People work a couple of jobs. They have children. They have things that they have to do, and it's hard to give the time. And you just read something about Betty Gaines. You know, there's somebody who's volunteered their time all through the years. So those of you that do balance family and children and work with volunteering for the town, I want you to know that personally, I appreciate it, and I know all of town administration appreciates it. Also, want to thank the residents and the businesses throughout the year who either send me emails or call or stop in. I've met with literally thousands. You know, if you can see from the report how many emails and calls that I return in the course of the year. And it gives me the opportunity to stay in touch with the residents. And I want to thank all those who are supportive, who are willing to come out and vocalize when they have an issue, and have absolutely... issue and have absolutely been willing to work with us to resolve those issues. So, we want to continue to do that. Just lastly, just want to point out a couple of things. I know Mr. Holstrom eloquently stated it, as did the chair and a couple of the other members of some things that we've accomplished this year, but I think it's important for the public to understand that this past year, a couple of things that were really, I think, outstanding that the town administration as a whole did. And I'm grateful that I get the credit for it, but I want to thank everybody who works with me on this. But completing the collective bargaining with eleven units was really critical. That's an important thing. And then to be able to do that without having to bring Labor Council to the table resulted in significant savings. You know, we've saved upwards of fifty, I believe fifty-four percent over five years in legal fees. And I think that's important and we want to continue to do that. Healthcare reform, again, I want to thank the unions for working with us. And with healthcare reform, we were able to, Ed and myself, to negotiate with sixteen unions, eleven on the town side and five on the school side, to come to a hundred percent agreement on changing co-pays and deductibles. And then through the collective bargaining process, which is a separate process, looking at the contribution rate and making changes there. Just in one year alone, those savings were over a million dollars. And those savings will be continuous. The healthcare reform savings are about $570,000 every year going forward, in addition to the savings from Medicaid, from the ninety-ten switch, from all the other things that were negotiated. So, those were important things that happened this year. I know later tonight, Adam Bernie's going to speak to you about net meeting and credit agreement, but town meeting approved the authority to enter into net meeting and credit agreements. And we entered into one in year three of my contract, which is what you have here, but we just recently signed the second one. Between the two of them, it's a $6 million savings for the town. The bond rating, we worked on it all through the year. We did not get the rating until a couple of months ago, but I want to let everyone know that we spent the entire year working on that bond rating. Everything we do in all of our financial policies, the implementation of those policies, the conservative budgeting, the steps that we take to increase free cash, increase stabilization, increase the excess levy, tighten our debt management strategies, everything led to an increased bond rating, which is fantastic and that will alone result in millions of dollars' worth of savings and those are real savings to the taxpayer.
Don't forget OPEB.
Including OPEB. The OPEB, the contribution to the OPEB. You know, not every community is doing that and, you know, I congratulate the town and finance committee and town meeting for continuing the OPEB contributions. It's a hard thing to say that you're going to have to do that every year, but it's been critical and we need to stay the course and continue to do that. This year, it was last summer, we had launched our first social media initiative and I know this board as well as prior board members had talked about the importance of social media. And we now have those Facebook and Twitter out there and we use it often and it's amazing. We're just hitting a whole different segment of the population that we're not able to hit using other outreach mechanisms. So, we're going to continue to use our newsletter that, you know, it's gone from, I think the first year we put that out was eight pages and it's up to twenty, twenty-eight pages every quarter. There's a lot of information. Facebook, Twitter, Auburn Community Television, so many outreach mechanisms just to get information to the public. And that's important, we need to keep doing that. Also, just want to mention that financial policies, thank again the Board of Selectmen for adopting those policies in November of twelve and thank the finance committee for doing that as well. We're hoping to come back to you this year with a couple of potential revisions and maybe some new policies. You have to have written policies. You can have practices, but it's really important that they have, we have written policies. So, I thank this board for doing that. And it was mentioned applying for grants. I want to thank all the department heads because we all have made it one of our goals to continue to apply for grants. We seek to identify what's out there, whether it be government grants or whether they be private foundation grants. This year, we applied for twenty-six grants and three regional grants. And there's been a lot of equipment that you see in town and people say, where did the money for this come from? A lot of it comes from grants. We've been very fortunate and we're going to continue to do that. It supplements what normally would have to come out of another area of the town for able to secure grants to do that. And lastly, just to mention the continued growth in economic development. This was a great year for the town. The commercial economic base is stabilized and it's growing and we have a good relationship with the business community and town administration. We meet with them often. We get their input through the Business Roundtable. And more importantly, we are willing to sit down with any business and have met with dozens of businesses over the year to try to facilitate their projects, even if they're in the planning stages now and they haven't started to facilitate, move that project along, we are working with them to facilitate it. So, I want to thank everybody for the kind words tonight and just to show you that I still, I love the position, I love serving as a town manager. It is truly an honor and a pleasure to do that every day. Every day is interesting, it's always a challenge, but the days do go by quickly, the nights go by quickly. And I think as a team, we're all accomplishing a lot. So, I want to thank everybody who works with me. They make every day nice to be here and you have to smile, you have to get through some of the difficult challenges and I think we're all able to do that and as a result, I think the town benefits from it. So, thank you all for everything.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We will now move on to the May sixth, 2014 Annual Town Meeting Warrant. And we can take positions on these articles if we choose, the positions being recommend approval, not recommend approval, defer to the petitioner, or we can take no position at this time and wait until the meeting prior to town meeting. Mr. Simoneon?
Before we get going, I can bring this up on the memorating if the board wants, but it seems relevant here. So, I went through, I went through the charter and a few other things and possibly I missed it. So, I'm not really sure who would have the authority to change the presentation phase of town meeting. And the reason that I...
The presentation?
The presentations that are done prior to voting on the articles. And the reason that I bring this up, and this is not, this is not a criticism of town meeting, this is fact, and I just think that the time could be better spent addressing the articles if the presentations were mailed to the town meeting, the full presentations were mailed to the town meeting members and possibly just the highlights hit during the presentation phase. And the reason that I say this is because four different town meetings, this is me personally viewing the town meeting from my position, and on four different town meetings, these were the high numbers, thirty-four, forty-one, twenty-eight, and thirty-five town meeting members who are voting on articles, who were sleeping during the presentation phase. Now, again, that's not a, I know that these people are working all day, they're tired at the end of the day, but how effective are those presentations if people are sleeping through them? So, I'm just bringing this up because if there's a way we can change that where the entire presentations are mailed to the town meeting members and the presenters just hit the highlights, I think it may be more effective use of the time. Just my, just throwing that out there. So, I couldn't find who that decision falls upon, but I, again, the efficiency just doesn't seem to be there.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair. I do have a comment on that. Yeah, the presentations can be a little lengthy and the information can be a little bit overwhelming in some cases. However, the presentations at the town meeting are for the benefit of the public in general, so people watching on the TV will not be receiving that information. So, those presentations still have to be given at town meeting. Yes, I understand that the town meeting members are going to vote on it, but the presentations is a general knowledge for the public viewing TV and people in the background that do not receive that information. So, yeah, as much as I understand where you're coming from, the presentations still have to be given because that's public information, it's for a vote on town meeting and all that information should be given so that the town is aware of what's going on.
We can put this on the next agenda and we can also contact the moderator who runs...
It's fine.
Yeah, no, not a problem. We can just, we can put it on the next agenda and we can get additional information from the moderator. Yes?
And Chair, aren't there, how many of the articles initially are to recommend that are automatic?
And I had gone through that, I believe... It is through, oh, have a mark right here. Marked it, through Article ten. Those are standard articles. So...
Okay, the first ten articles which are standard, each and every town meeting, I would suggest that we take a vote to recommend approval rather than going through all of them.
Is there discussion on those? And I'll just say, Article one to address Mrs. Simoneon's comment, we'll still, we'll still hear the reports, it'll just be in what format?
Obviously, it wouldn't change for this town meeting, but I'm just, you know, who's the thought?
So, so we have a motion, recommend approval, Articles one through ten. And it was seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article eleven is to see if town meeting will vote to appropriate $500,000 to the OPEB Liability Trust by the manager. Is there a motion?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. The next, one, two, three, four, five, six, by the school committee, we can take them separately or together. I believe Article... Mr. Kazonovich, Article twelve and thirteen standard for the appropriation of Medicaid receipts and the interest of the high school interest.
Through the chair, they have been standard articles for the past several years, although I can tell you the value has changed based upon the level of reimbursement in twelve from the Commonwealth as well as the amount of interest accrued on a $500,000 trust account we have for Article thirteen.
Okay. But it's a figure that changes, but the circumstances don't change. Mr. Holstrom?
I make a motion that we recommend approval on Articles twelve through seventeen that have been placed in there by the Auburn School Committee.
So, is there a second for discussion?
I'll second.
Okay. So, just, I just wanted to make members aware that in your... I keep doing that tonight. There was additional explanation on Articles fourteen through seventeen. And then also twelve and thirteen, which we just discussed, there was additional information. So, what, what is here? There's an explanation. Mr. Simoneon?
Yeah, I'd like to separate out the CIP articles from that list and take those separately from, I don't think all the school items should be one thing, because I'd like to address the CIP articles.
I have no problem with that. I'll put my motion.
And the second?
Withdraw.
Okay. Okay, so is there a motion for Articles twelve and thirteen, which are not CIP?
Make a motion, we recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Simoneon?
Through the chair, Mr. Kazonovich. Article thirteen, that's interest from that revolving fund, so...
If I may, it's not a revolving account, it's a trust fund.
And is, are we, are we just taking the interest every year?
Correct.
Does the amount in there, trust fund, change? Is that attitude?
It changes from year to year.
All right, okay. Because I thought it was a different amount at the... Okay, I'm fine.
So, there's a motion and a second to recommend Articles twelve and thirteen. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, Mrs. Simoneon, do you want to take Articles fourteen through seventeen individually?
Yeah, no, it's just, you know, typically, we have this conversation, it seems, every time a town meeting rolls around and there's a fairly substantial lot of money here that is being requested to be moved.
I believe that there was an explanation at the joint meeting, no, at the joint meeting, and a lot of this is a result of the new middle school and the changing needs of, you know...
Understood. In the explanations that are here on these articles, for instance, Article fourteen, savings from installation of a new boiler, and I'm just curious because I...
So, why don't we take Article fourteen first?
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Kazonovich will address Article fourteen.
Well, I think that the same principles and thought process is given to each one of the articles, fourteen through seventeen. There's roughly $1.8 million of need or rehab required at the existing middle school to transition that from a middle school to an elementary school. These funds in a presentation at that joint meeting have been identified. Total savings of 1.6 that you are seeing is part of these amendments here. Some of this work will commence in the late spring and summer of this year with the remaining balance to follow at the conclusion of the school year in fifteen, with a completion date of September of fifteen as well, the same time that the new middle school is scheduled to open.
My question actually was going to be, 2010, 2011, 2012 are the dates of the original CIP article, so that would be the date that the money was borrowed for that project, correct?
Not necessarily. In some cases, this money was banned for a period of one to two years with a long-term borrowing at the end of that banned period. And we have roughly two years to expend those funds upon bonding of those monies.
So, if the full, if the full amount isn't spent on the project, and I know we've had this discussion at town meeting, if the full amount that's borrowed for that specific project isn't spent, what happens to that, to that money that wasn't used? It just sits there until we find another use for it?
No, no, and we've made an effort to identify those balances over the course of the last two fiscal years. And we bring in amendments that money can be repurposed for a like purpose with a qualifying value that fits under the capital needs. Clearly, this does fit the eligibility requirements of the repurpose being suggested here. So, no, we try to keep update, up to date on the borrowings and the expense of those funds.
All right. It seems, this is the part that I guess I struggle with, because it seems like if we've borrowed this money, we only spent part of it. I know if, what would make sense to me is if I were going to borrow money for something, I didn't need the full amount, I would use what was left over to start paying off. And then if I needed to borrow money further down the road, I would buy, but it just kind of seems like this money sits there and we're still, it's still money we borrowed and we're paying for.
You can't pay debt and interest with remaining proceeds of a bond issue? You can only repurpose it?
Okay. If that's the case, then it's fine. It's just another reason, I guess, why our government is so broken. That's fine, that answers my question.
Mr. Holstrom?
I make a motion that we recommend approval for Article fourteen through seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman?
In that we have the statement from the school committee on all of those articles, the information still is not before the town meeting members or the public. And they're going to make a presentation that evening. Why do we not defer to the petitioner rather than recommend?
I believe that this, is this the information that was presented to us at the joint meeting? So, we've had, we've had this, we've had this presentation?
We have.
It's been out there? Right, but this is our, these are our positions. So, we had the presentation at the joint meeting with extensive explanations as to the repurposing of the funds, the needs of the current middle school, and the old facility, which is expected to be utilized as a three-through-five building. So, these explanations, although it's in our packet tonight for explanation of the warrant articles, we had all of this information at the joint meeting. So, I will support Mr. Holstrom's motion. Is there... Is there any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article 18. Mr. Kasnovich, is that a change to increase the exemption values by 100%? Or is that a standard?
No, it's standard.
Standard language?
Actually, the financial impact of this article, for every 1% of levy that is increased, it would cost $424.18 at current value. So, minimal impact is a result of this.
Are there any questions on this article?
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Mr. Kasnovich, do you have information on Article 19, or should we wait on this? The carpet to the parking lot, I know the carpet parking lot needs.
The latest information I received is the value of repair for the parking lot is estimated to be $30,000. The repurposing of this article would apply 24 of the $30,000 to get that work completed. In discussions with the police chief, he has indicated that he has some surplus funds currently within his FY '14 operating budget, that he will seek a transfer before the finance committee for approval to give him the additional $5,000 to $6,000 needed to get that job completed.
So, the deletion of the $24,000 is due to the water main break? And that was taken care of under a different source?
I believe so. That rug had to be...
That was taken care of under a different source?
Motion to recommend.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Again, we have a CIP article, the DPW director. See if the town meeting will vote to amend CIP program article. Three of them made 2012 in a town meeting as follows. The balance, $4,875, zero turn mower in the DPW Parks Division capital budget in the balance of $3,653 for Parks fencing. Parks Division capital budget for a total of $8,461.75 to stand-up mower. Do members have any questions on this? The DPW director is here, if we do.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recommend approval. We have Article 21, to see if the town meeting will appropriate a sum of money needed for the additional sidewings to the existing Purple Heart Monument in order to accommodate the additional names to be added now and the future of the Purple Heart Monument, and that is by citizens' petition. And if you'll notice, there's also a second article regarding this in Article 24.
Motion to recommend Article 21.
Second. Under discussion, Mr. Simoni?
So, we have two articles asking for the same thing.
One has a figure.
One has a figure, which I believe is required for...
Through the chair, you could amend the citizens' petition to include a figure, but the Veterans Advisory Committee had provided a figure because they had gone out and received quotes.
I know that we had discussion on this at a prior meeting, and we had folks talking about it. It would seem that town meeting would have to vote on one or the other, not both.
Right.
Could not approve both.
One has a figure and one does not.
So...
I can support deferring to the petitioners and wait to see the presentations at town meeting.
I would... For both Articles 20, I make a motion for Article 21.
Well, we haven't... Mr. Grossman made an motion, there was a second one moment. Mr. Page?
Asked to amend it to include both articles to defer to petitioner. They both refer to the same thing. If Mr. Grossman's interested in amending the article, why take them separately? They're asking for the same thing, defer to the petitioner.
If we can have the article changed, 21, to see if the town meeting will appropriate $5,500 for additional sidewings, that would take care of the other article.
But that's not to us, that's up to the citizens who made the petition. So, I mean, I'm just saying, why don't we just...
Mr. Page wants to be heard on this. I believe it's his citizens' petition, but I still recommend we wait until town meeting to hear the presentations by both. Mr. Page?
At this point, both the citizens that did the petition and the committee are going to try to work together to get this straightened out. There's quotes and stuff that haven't been done. I mean, there's veterans that were on a petition on the citizens because there was a problem with the article, as far as the committee goes, that it wasn't even voted on until well after the warrant article was closed. But in discussion at that meeting, it was that we would work to try to work them both out. So, at this point, I would like to see the article, as far as a petition for the residents, go be...
Defer to the petitioner.
Yeah, to the petitioner. Refer to the petitioner, and you can refer to the other one to the committee, and we can discuss it prior to and give you a final at town meeting.
So, Mr. Grossman's motion is to recommend approval. It was seconded, so I guess we...
Withdraw.
Mr. Grossman will withdraw his motion. Who seconded it? Withdraw your second?
I withdraw. I don't know if it was Mr. Holstrom.
So, is there a motion to defer to the petitioner, Articles 21 and 24?
Motion to defer Articles 21 and 24. For Articles 21 and 24 to defer to the petitioner. And if I may, I just... The citizens' petition article is very specific...
Can we just get a second on this, please?
Second.
Mr. Simoni?
The citizens' petition article is very specific on what the addition will be, whereas Article 24 just says an addition, and Article 24 has the value. So, if... Just a suggestion, if you guys are going to work together, that specific item that's in there as to what the addition and the dollar value would probably be the best way to go, I would think, to make it clear for town meeting.
You will have it specifically for whoever does it.
Because those are the only discrepancies I could see.
Yeah, it'll be all taken care of. That's only... The petition one was to get it on the warrant, because people worried about it not getting on the warrant. And then the other one was done after the fact, so we're just going to try to work together and help out the veterans and...
Makes sense.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Page. So, the motion is to defer to the petitioner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Article 22, to see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Development and Inspectional Services Public Health for the purpose of maintaining funding for compost bins to be sold to the residents, with expenditures not to exceed $5,000. Do we have any questions on this article, Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Barney?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The Solid Waste Committee received a grant from the DEP to purchase for sale to town residents compost bins. They look kind of like a little grain silo. They stand about this tall. They're about this yay around. They're black. You put your compost in there. Over time, you get your black gold, usually two or three months. And so, what the revolving account is for is, the grant was for an initial purchase. The sale of those would go back into the revolving account to allow for continued purchase and sale to residents. They're at sale for just about cost. We're required to buy a certain volume each time they're ordered. So, it's the compost bins for the backyard and the little, I think they're 1 gallon or 1 and 1/2 gallon scrap bucket for inside. It's got to cover all that kind of good stuff.
So, there's no cost to the town, it's just to make them available to the residents? So, we purchase them and we're reimbursed?
So, this becomes the property of the person who...
Correct, the person who purchases it.
That's the part I wasn't sure about.
Yes, and the idea is it's part of a reduction in the waste stream.
If there are no any additional questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted, again by the Director of Development and Inspectional Services, to see if the town meeting will vote to establish a revolving fund for the Department of Development and Inspectional Services Building Inspections Division for the purpose of housing funds remitted to the Town of Auburn as a result of ticketed violations to the building code, as outlined in Mass. General Law, with expenditures not to exceed $20,000. Mr. Barney?
So, over the past few years, we've found some new initiatives that the BBRS has passed throughout the state. And they have, over, I think, about in the last five years, developed a new ticketing procedure. When you violate the building code, the building official has the opportunity to issue a fine. In the event that that fine is issued, those funds are to be remitted to an account to be used for the function, operation, and furthering of education of the building officials within the community. So, in order to keep with the Mass. General Law and the ideas behind the ticketing procedure, we want to create this revolving account so that any funds collected for malfeasance in the building trades are collected to further the education of our in-house building inspectors.
Mr. Simoni and then Mr. Holstrom?
These are violations of people doing...
Work without a permit, yes.
Okay.
This isn't driving around and saying, oh, that looks out of code. It's, you know, you started gutting a house, and I've caught you twice before doing this, so you know you're doing it wrong. I'm going to write you a ticket.
So, then this would be used to... This is going to be used for training purposes?
For operation and training of the building department. It could be used for, if there were a specific piece of equipment that we needed to purchase, based on either code changes or consistent issues that we see arising. It could be used for sending the inspectors to seminars, any variety of things that further the day-to-day operation or education of the building officials.
Mr. Holstrom?
Through the chair to the CFO, how would that... Is that going to affect their budget any? You know, the operational budget? If we put in a revolving account for fines that are received, how is that going to affect their operating budget? I know that's something that the Finance Committee is going to be, you know, would be responsible for, but just out of curiosity, how that would work? Would that, you know, delete operational budgets for whatever fines we've covered?
Through the chair, we've had some lengthy discussions about the impacts that this would have. No, it's not going to have any impact on the operational side of the budget.
I would say, in theory, and probably in the long term, it may have the potential for reduction of some of the line item for education that we have in the budget. I can say that I don't believe that these fines had been a large revenue source in the past. I don't expect them to be a major revenue source in the future. But in order to comply, we want to create the revolving account so that we're not chasing them every year to try and carry over what's left. And, you know, I think that we have $1,600 or $1,800 in a line item for education. Potentially, after two or three years, we may see this account be at a point that we can tail that back a little bit and use some of the revolving account. That depends on how compliant people become over time.
Mr. Holstrom?
Just a follow-up question through the chair, again to Eddie. Are there any other departments that are doing this? It seems as though we've got violation money coming from building permits and what have you. What about the fire department with any violations that they have or any permits that are coming through? Well, not permits, permits would be something different, but if they have any violations, if they can find anybody, and the police department, how that would be with violations through the street, do their money come back to those individual departments as such?
The only violations that come to mind that are outside of the general fund are for alarm fees. So, if there are a number of calls as a result of a faulty alarm, those do go into a revolving account. They've been going in there for a number of years. But for the most part, those types of fees currently go into the general fund.
Mr. Barney had wanted to respond as well.
Through the chair, this isn't something that we've decided internally to do. This is the way that the state has dictated that building code fines are to be addressed. We have the potential to find people for zoning fines, and those are general fund-eligible. If someone pays a zoning fine, that goes back through to the general fund. This is dictated by the state or the Commonwealth.
Mr. Holstrom then, Mr. Simoni?
Just to finish up here, then if the state is saying something that they have to do that through there, wouldn't it be, you know, good for the other departments if there are any violations of fines collected? Have them access to their own monies, collecting and putting them back into those budgets?
I think in this case, the state does allow for a creation of a revolving account for this purpose. In many cases, the state won't allow for like purposes within other departments.
Thank you.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, I'm not going to support this as it's written, because it's not clearly defined. It says, "For the purpose of housing funds remitted to the Town of Auburn as a result of ticketed violations." That's not really a purpose, that's the effect of the cause. And it doesn't define what you said in here. You said that it would be used for training or possibly equipment that would be needed. So, the purpose really would be to use it for training or for equipment that you needed pursuant to this, the inspectional services. But the purpose is not money that is being collected. It doesn't make sense.
I don't have the article in front of me, so I don't want to speak to the language, but I...
It just doesn't give a clear use of it, that's all. There's really, the purpose isn't stated, that it will be used for this. The purpose that's stated here is housing funds...
The purpose is for housing the funds, so it's like for housing the funds. It doesn't say what the purpose of the use is.
If I may, it's very similar to the money collected for conservation fees. It's allowed to be put in a revolving account. It can be used for support staff. It can be used for educational purposes. And that's another one that came to mind, I'm sorry, but it just came to me. But conservation fees are handled in the same manner. So, it's allowed to be used for purposes like Adam has identified. It is an allowable expense identified under MGL. So, it fits. I mean, it's for purposes that Adam has identified.
I'm not debating whether it's legal or not. I'm just saying, it's not... The purpose is not clearly defined. None of the things that were mentioned that it could be used for. And in the past, when we've had articles such as this for, you know, like cemetery accounts, things of that nature, it's been clearly defined of what it could be used for, and in this case, it's not. And as written, I just, I'm not going to support it.
Mr. Barney, just, Mass. General Law, Chapter 148A, Chapter 5, outline what it can be used for.
That was the point that I was going to make. The purpose of the account is to house the money. The expenditures...
Is outlined by Mass. General Law.
...in 148A, Section 5.
So, Mass. General... I mean, if... Certainly, I would think that, Mr. Barney, you could make Mass. General Law, Chapter 148A, Section 5 available. But it outlines...
If it was a scripter's error, I could certainly correct the verbiage.
If it's clarified for town meeting, I have no problem. But as is, as it's written, I just think it's way too vague, and I'm not going to support it as is.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? 4 to 1. So, I just, just for clarification, because I'm not sure who made that motion. Was there a motion on that article? The Article 23, because we had discussion prior to it. So, is there a motion to recommend? Sharon, did you have a move?
I have a move.
Yeah, because we went right into discussion, correct. Is there a motion to recommend Article 23?
So moved.
The second, and then the vote is, all those in favor?
Yes.
And opposed? Mr. Simoni, thank you. Okay, Articles 25... Okay, Articles 25 through 28 are by the Sewer Superintendent, Mr.?
Yeah.
Yes?
Um, I guess, I will, just to go back, we were talking about Article 21 and 22. Did we include Article 24 in that motion?
Article, yes.
Twenty-one and twenty-four.
Twenty, twenty-one and twenty-four would defer to the petitioner.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted, just wanted to make sure that we had covered all of them.
Article 22 was approved unanimously, Article 24, four, 23, four to one. So we're now on Articles 25 through 28, which are by the Sewer Superintendent, which Mr. Coyle is here, if there are any questions. Article 25, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $18,000, of which $3,000 is from sewer retained earnings, $10,610.96 from FEMA 2013, snow reimbursement account, 2119, 29013, and $4,389.04 from general fund revenues to remove old alarm monitoring equipment from an obsolete in-track alarm system and install the necessary equipment needed.
Through the chair.
Yes?
The CFO had a, through the chair, the CFO has had conversations with both the Fire Chief and the Sewer Superintendent, so I think he can address the financial...
Uh, this is to replace an antiquated monitoring system that is presently installed in our buildings. Actually, the upgrades we can no longer get because the software is outdated. So this would equip the buildings to be monitored by an outside vendor. So anytime an alarm is, goes off, whether it be for fire or for a sprinkler head or anything of that nature, it automatically notifies dispatch and a, crews are sent out to respond to that call.
Mr. Holstrom.
Um, excuse me, through the chair, if they appropriate the $18,000 for, or the, the money for this alarm system, and there is a alarm system monitoring, that's gonna be additional cost to this, or will it be included as part of this?
The 18 includes year-one's monitoring costs as well.
Will the Sewer Department be able to absorb those, that monitoring cost year to year?
Yes, their share, well, this is a one-time capital expense. 18 puts a new monitoring system in, I think, five public buildings. Beyond that, I think the total monitoring cost on an annual basis is about $2,000, which would be shared by the five buildings.
Okay, so that would be under the Sewer Department, and probably they're pretty much self-sufficient, so they should be able to absorb that?
They would absorb their share, their one-fifth of that monitoring cost.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Smontian.
So is this, this ring a central alarm somewhere? All these, 'cause it says various buildings, so obviously some have it, some don't, and is this a central alarm for police or fire or? And, and how is it being monitored?
It's monitored by an outside vendor, and there's an automatic dispatch call that goes to our local police department when they get the call.
So, the system, the system that's put in place, then I guess I would assume that, since the old system, there, this requires upgrades and software patches and things of that nature, and is that part of the cost on a year-over-year basis?
That's part of the support cost, yes.
Okay, is that, is that like a maintenance agreement or something?
It's called, it's, it's basically a monitoring fee.
Okay, all right. So, so we know that, we know basically what that fee is gonna be year-over-year, and it's gonna be part, all right.
If there are no further questions on...
Motion to recommend.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Article 26, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $28,500 from sewer retained earnings to install a new exhaust fan at the Shore Drive Pump Station and to install new ventilation ductwork and exhaust fan at the West Street Pump Station.
Motion to recommend.
Second.
It's pretty self-explanatory, I think, but...
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Article 27, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of $30,000 from sewer retained earnings to install a new sewer grinder at the West Street Pump, West Street Pump Station. Mr. Smontian.
I gotta ask, 'cause I've never heard of it, what is, what are we doing with that? Just...
It's a high-tech garbage disposal, isn't it?
Yeah, basically, it's a grinder pump.
And I'm not gonna tell you what is grinder.
And we don't wanna know. We, we, we do not want the details.
That's all the information needed, I'm good.
We, yeah. Yeah. Thank you for not sharing the details.
My apologies if there's any small kids still up, my apologies.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Article 28, to see if the town meeting will vote to appropriate the sum of, do we have that yet? So, do we wanna...
Make a motion at town, you know, wait till town meeting?
I would take no position.
There's a, well, there's a, hold till town meeting is the motion, is there a second on that one? So the motion is to wait till town meeting?
Take no position till town meeting, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Also, Article 29 is similar with no figure. Motion to hold till town meeting?
Take no position, yes.
Second? All those in favor, any opposed, so voted? Article 30, our town clerk is here, 'cause I know we'll have some questions on this, to see if the town meeting will vote to set the following fees for the town clerk's office to go into effect July 1, 2014, burial permit fee, dog license for male, female dogs, business certificate, business certificate adjustments and withdrawals, marriage intentions, affidavit and corrections of vital records, genealogy searches. Ms. Gabri. Are these...
Good evening again.
Good evening.
Okay. Some of these I'm already charging, and I have not gone to town meeting, I discovered in my information, I had never gotten approval from town meeting, I'm not supposed to be charging fees without approval.
Okay.
So, the, um... Genealogy searches are not on my fee schedule.
Okay.
Affidavit and corrections of vital records are not on my fee schedule. So those are additions. The increase in, and adjustments to business certificates and withdrawals are not on my fee schedule. So those I need approval for from town meeting. Marriage intentions and business certificates are increases. Those, that paperwork is staff, the time involved and the staff processing them, I feel that the increases cover the time it takes for the staff to do those. As of July 1, I'm gonna start charging for burial permits. I haven't done that in the past, most towns do charge for burial permits, but Dave Bellows from Britton Wallace was the Assistant Burial Agent, and he wasn't charging, so it was difficult for my office to charge if he wasn't charging. He's no longer associated with Britton Wallace, and, and the Assistant Burial Agent is my assistant. So, I think in keeping with other towns. The increase in the dog license is to keep in, and this new state law that requires the animal control law requires that male and females have a, you know, different fee. And right now, we're charging $15 across the board, so increasing it $5 for male, female, and leaving the Spain neuter fee intact is, was my goal.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know if anybody has any other questions.
So the additions are the business certificate adjustment and withdrawal?
Yes.
The affidavit in corrections of vital records, genealogy search, searches, those are additional fees, new fees, if we wanna call them that.
Yep.
And the others are, um...
Increase, some increases, yeah.
Increase.
And the burial permit will be a new fee.
A new fee as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Thank you for waiting. So, Article 30. So Articles 31 through 36, we have hearings scheduled at our next meeting, so I don't think it would make...
31, through the chair.
I'm sorry? Say that again?
If we could speak to Article 31 for a moment, we had some information...
Okay, before, before we make a motion?
Correct.
If we can hear on Article 31.
Detective Director Coyle?
Relative to the proposed street acceptance and layout hearings, I believe, scheduled, one of the roads, Rethel, for the, for the most part, Rethel Street, the, the entire portion had been accepted, I believe, last year. There's a, a small segment of roadway that veers off of Rethel that a, a petitioner, a citizen's petition, had brought forward. And through our research of that segment of roadway, it's more or less a common driveway in a sense. What happens is, there's really no layout to accept, there was no defined layout through a, through the planning board process. There was an easement granted over another's property to access these two houses. So if we were to accept this easement, in, in essence, we would be doing a land-taking in a sense of this property. So I, I don't see how we can have a layout hearing, there's no defined layout, there's only an easement over another property to access these, these houses. So that's on, on Rethel.
Okay. So, so what's your intent, so?
I think because that was...
Are you withdrawing, I mean, it's an article on the warrant, are you going to withdraw the article?
I don't think we can withdraw it because it's a citizen's petition, so I think it has to go forward to town meeting, but without a layout hearing, I don't know how you can accept it, and I don't think the town should accept. So our recommendation would be that we wouldn't accept that as a town road.
Okay. But we do have a, a hearing that's been advertised?
Um, no, because...
Oh, the hearing wasn't advertised? Oh, okay. So do we notify the, the citizens? Have, are the citizens who presented this petition aware of this information?
This is something in, last week that we discovered, so I don't believe they've been notified as of yet.
Okay. Because, I mean, we did take a vote to hold a hearing. I know that the hearing wouldn't be appropriate with the information we have, I'm just wondering how we, we move forward, whether we just notify...
I, I think we would have to notify the, the petitioners that, because there is no layout to be accepted, that we're unable to hold a layout hearing.
Okay. Mr. Smontian.
Um, well, first of all, what part, what part of Rethel Street are you talking about?
When you, when you go down Vine Street and it turns into Rethel Street, before you get to the driveway for Rocketland, before you get there, there's a, if you were to take a sharp right, almost a...
A little spur?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So, that was someone's land, and then they just...
That was someone's land, basically their backyard, and easement was granted to access the two or three houses that were there, that were constructed, and the houses were built there.
Okay. So, I, how long, how long will it take to notify the folks who were involved in this that legally we can't accept it as a road?
Well, we could notify them this week.
Okay. And I, I don't really see any other way to proceed.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, we have to notify them.
We're not in the business of taken lands, so...
Right.
It would make sense, but yeah, I, I'm sure they'll have some questions, but I mean, it just, it is what it is. We can't just say, "Yeah, we'll, we'll accept it and we'll take it away without..."
It's, it's basically an easement over somebody's property.
Okay.
So, so I guess if, for some odd reason, the, the people who presented this as a citizen's petition pursue it at town meeting, I mean, I would think that we could not support this article as presented.
And, and we've had, through the chair, we've had discussions today with Attorney Henigan, and he was of the same, same opinion, that we wouldn't be able to accept this.
So, so the best motion, just so that we're clear on our position, is vote not to recommend?
At this point, probably not to recommend.
They may withdraw it at, at some point, they may, the, the citizens may withdraw.
If that particular roadway is a separate article, then I would recommend that you not to recommend.
Okay.
Would be the suggestion.
Mr. Smontian.
That stretch is paved?
Yes.
Do you know?
Don't know how it was paved.
Because it's not, it's not driveway, it's, it's actual road pavement, so I...
It, I would describe it as a common driveway, even though it's wider than a typical driveway.
Wondering how it got paved previously.
Couldn't answer that.
Okay.
It wasn't the town.
I, I mean, maybe that was the reason, part of the expectation, that they thought it was a road, but the research indicates, and that's fine. I, I mean, I would, I would make a motion not to recommend.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Mr. Holstrom, I know you had your whole hand up.
No.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Articles 32 through 36, we are holding hearings at our next meeting, so...
A motion to take no position on those until the hearing.
Okay.
After the hearing, the town meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
The motion is to take no position until town meeting, and it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? Article 37, to see if the town meeting will vote to amend the balance of the appropriate, appropriation approved under Article 17 of the May 1, 2003, is that correct? 2003 Annual Town Meeting from Expendable Trust Cemetery Perpetual Care 1025 for replacement windows in the cemetery office, building to tree removal, is that correct, 2003?
Motion to recommend.
Second. Okay, under discussion, go ahead.
At the cemetery, we're gonna be opening up a new section, and it's gonna be a safer situation to have the trees taken down professionally, and in this account, we had the $1,000 left over. So, what I'd like to do is to amend from the window account and have it, transfer it to a tree account.
Is there? Mr. Smontian.
Well, it's not, not transferring, you know, it's not an account transfer, it's just repurposing, right?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Kessavich.
If I, if I may, unlike the other amendments, this is not borrowed money. This money was appropriated directly from Expendable Trust Perpetual Care, and it would have to revert back to that if not used. But as Wayne has indicated, there is a need for it, it, it is a cemetery need, it can be repurposed for the, the article as written.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Grossman?
The only thing I question is, it was from an article in May of 2003, and we made it a strong effort in the last couple of years to eliminate some of these old numbers that are sitting out there, how does this manage to sit there for the past 11 years?
As I indicated, Mr. Grossman, this is not borrowed money, I think we've attempted to clean up those funds that were derived from bond proceeds. Perpetual care is allowed to be carried over, or outside articles are allowed to be carried over from year to year. Those articles that have unexpendable balances can revert back to the, to perpetual care or to the general fund if a need is no longer required.
This is why I was trying to clean up some of these accounts.
Thank you. Mr. Smontian.
I, I guess just the last question I would have then is, if 11 years ago, we needed to replace windows, were they just not done? Are they worse now, 11 years later?
No, what, what had happened was, we had had the windows replaced. At the time, we had, we didn't have a building maintenance, but we did have a person that was very handy, and so he helped keep the costs down a lot cheaper than what we had had.
Fair enough, thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted? So that wraps up the warrant. The next item is gift acceptance to the town manager from Hometown Bank in the amount of $2,500, and this is for the Independence Day concert. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you to the board. We're very grateful, we have been approached by Hometown Bank, who wanted to make a donation to one of our events in town, and asked if they could be the sponsor for the Independence Day concert. So they would be the sole sponsor, it will... it will cover the cost for the entire concert, which is extended over, we add an extra half hour to the time this year through the fireworks, so we're very grateful for them. Hometown Bank previously had been a sponsor over two summers for the Summer Concert Series, we were fortunate to get some other sponsors through some various local corporations for the Summer Concert Series, so that is covered for this season as well, so this would cover the Independence Day concert.
Great. Mr. Grossman?
Did you just say we're covered for the whole season now?
Through the chair, we are covered for the remainder of this summer, for the entire summer season, I believe we have 10 concerts scheduled for the season, starting in June and going through August.
And that's scheduled?
There may be 12. The schedule is available online, it was in the newsletter that just went out, and there are other sponsors, for that particular, the Summer Concert Series, we have Polar, Southbridge, Savings Bank, and I believe we have one more.
There were three?
I don't remember, yeah.
It's not going to come to me?
I remember everything, we have all the logos of the Summer Concert Series, and then the Hometown Bank would be for the Independence Day concert alone.
You'll have to look it up before, okay. So, is there a motion regarding the Hometown Bank?
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed so voted? There are no other gift acceptance, no...
Through the chair. The other one is Allied, which is Republic Waste, and they will actually be coming in to the board, I believe, at one of their May meetings for the check presentation.
Excellent.
That's one of the third sponsors.
Excellent, okay. Next, we have town manager items, and the first item is the update on the status of the net metering credit agreement.
Through the chair, I'm going to turn to Adam Barney to explain this, he is our Green Communities key person here, but we have very good news about two net metering credit agreements, just by way of background, the May 2013 vote of town meeting authorized us to enter into various agreements for net metering credit.
Mr. Barney.
Hello. So, we have signed, or town manager has signed, two net metering credit agreements, the first with RGS Energy, who was formerly Mercury Solar, it's a 20-year agreement with two five-year options, average annual savings from our current electricity bill, based on our current usage, approximately $209,000, with a savings over the 30-year term of 6.2 And the second agreement is with SolarCity, this is a 20-year agreement, average annual savings about $150,000, and total 20-year savings of about $3 million. Different levels of energy, slightly different per kilowatt-hour costs, so that accounts for the variance between the two, clearly for the extra 10 years, energy costs are predicted to be much higher, thus the increased savings. This is all based on conservative formulas, we're starting with a nine cent per kilowatt-hour and a 10.5 cent per kilowatt-hour price point, 2% escalator, and it's assuming the savings based on assumption that national grid rates will raise 2% over the 20- and 30-year periods.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Barney.
Thank you.
The next item we have is the announcement of the Department of Conservation and Recreation, 2014 spring season reforestation, excuse me, kickoff.
Through the chair, thank you. This is an announcement by the Department of Conservation and Recreation, which is DCR, that they have refunded their 2014 reforestation program, which is for those residents that live in the designated or regulated ALB or Asian Longhorn Beetle area. We have a map included in this evening's announcement, as well as, it is online, it is also, we posted it on Facebook, as a matter of fact, within, I'm going to say, 30 minutes of posting on Facebook, DCR notified me that they had actually received calls from three Auburn residents who were in the area, started on Facebook, and are calling them to get their free trees. So, it's a good program, the trees don't last, they're not huge trees, you know, we'll be honest, the trees are smaller, but they're available, and people really should take advantage of it. It is in the Asian Longhorn Beetle designated area, again, that you can contact the number that you see here at DCR, which is 508-852-8073, and the trees will be available as long as they have them, so we really urge residents to take advantage, it's a great program. And I should follow this up by saying, to this point, DCR tests on a regular basis, and they have not identified any presence of Asian Longhorn Beetle in Auburn, but because one was identified within a mile radius of the town, that's what initially triggered the designation of the ALB area, probably going on three years ago now.
Excellent. And is that all you have?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We've taken care of tabled items, we have no Board of Selectmen items. Mr. Simone.
I don't have an item for tonight, but I would like to ask the town assessor to appear at the next selectmen's meeting, because for an item I will be putting on under member items at our next meeting.
So, you'll give her information as to what you need?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I just have some questions about...
Okay. As long as she knows what she needs to be prepared for. Okay. Is there any public comment?
Good evening, board. Mike Robideau, 34 Mill Street, I just got a couple things I want to run by you guys. I spoke with Bill Coyle last week regarding the paving of Mill Street, I think he said he was going to go from Millbury Street to Old Common Road, but Mill Street goes down to my property and to my neighbor's property, which we pay over $10,000 a year in taxes. So, we're kind of concerned, and I'm here on behalf of my neighbor also, that we're concerned that he is not going to pave that part of Mill Street, when it should be paved if it's in the budget, and if he's paving Mill Street, there's only three properties up on Mill Street, and us two are down the bottom, and we're paying commercial tax, and the residents up there are getting a brand-new road, and we're paying more in taxes. I have no problem with that, I think it's a great idea, but I think he should look to see if he can pave down to the properties where everyone is a fair share, and I'd like to have his answer on that.
Well, it wasn't on the agenda tonight, so we can certainly get a report from him.
Okay. And another thing, I was at home watching the meeting tonight, and Julie Jacobson, through the chair, I'd like to ask her a question, I've called her office several times, and asked her to call me, and I left messages with Sharon, no response, no callbacks, I then called Ed, Ed answered his phone, we spoke for a few minutes, and I asked Ed why she wouldn't give me a courtesy call back, he said he couldn't answer that. I'd like to know why, she says she reaches out to everybody and thousands of residents, but I've spoke to, in the last two weeks, I spoke to over probably 300 residents, and she's never gotten back to half of them, so for her to come before this board and say she reaches out to town residents, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a business owner, and I'm a property owner, she has not reached out to me at all to answer any questions that I have for her, I'd like to know why.
Well, since it was on the agenda, certainly I'll allow, but I just wanted to be very clear on something you just said, you said you spoke to 300 people, and half of them told you that they contacted her and didn't receive, so a hundred...
I would say, out of the 300 that I spoke to, I'd say about 20 to 22 people said that...
Okay, so that's not half, half is 150.
I'm sorry, 22 people said that, you know, she hasn't returned their calls.
Okay, so if of those, 20 to 22 people who claim to have told Mr. Robideau that that call has not been returned, please contact this office, because I know that all calls are logged, I've looked at the logs, I followed up, yes, I have.
You have seen me called, correct?
I've seen your name...
You said you looked, so you see my calls were several times, I've called her over, I'd say about 12 times in the last three weeks.
Okay. I'm going to let...
And then she is laughing about it, I mean, what kind of manager is that?
I am going to let the manager respond, because it was under...
Thank you.
Previous discussion.
Through the chair, I'm happy to respond to this, I had heard that Mr. Robideau had accused me of not returning his phone calls, and I checked with all three clerical in my office, and not one of them received one phone call from Mr. Robideau, in which case he was asking to speak to me. He did contact Sharon and asked for something from Sharon, but he never called and left a message for me, there is no record of it, and I didn't return a call because I didn't get the call. For anyone who has said I haven't returned their calls, possibly something fell through the cracks, it certainly isn't intentional, we logged the calls, I return every call or every email, I have tracked all the emails that have come into the office, and they come in through a certain account, so I can see which ones have been responded to, and then I actually reported on it here tonight, how many were responded to, so like I said, several thousand. If there are 20 that didn't get a call back, my apologies, I'm more than happy to return their call. Some people, I try to return calls within a day if possible, and I will tell you, it's not always possible, sometimes it is two or three days, sometimes I have to triage those calls and return those that have a priority, so perhaps if someone called in the last couple of days, well, today's Monday, they may not have got a call back, but I do make a habit of calling everybody back.
But those calls would have been logged, of the name, the address, the time the call came in, because I know gone are the days of the little pink slips, you know, while you're out, you know, that we used years ago, I know, I've seen the logs.
Correct. And, you know, I would be concerned if 12 calls went into the office, I don't understand how 12 calls could not be logged. I can understand where there may be, one call may be dropped occasionally, but truly it would be hard to believe that we didn't log in 12 calls from the same person, I think I would have known that.
So, you're saying that I didn't ask for you to call me back? You're wrong. I even asked Ed why he wouldn't return my call. But anyway, that's all I have to say, I mean, she said she reaches out...
I don't know what calls the manager's office gets, what calls she doesn't get.
Right, and I've asked you, why is she returning?
Well, we're not going to, excuse me.
My response to you is, call the office and inquire through the office.
But your response to me was, I don't know why she's not calling you back.
I have no knowledge that a call is being placed into the office, Mr. Robideau.
And you told me specifically, on the phone the other day, that she, you don't know why she's not returning my call.
I said you would have to call the office and ask her, did I say that?
She did, but you also said what I just said, am I correct?
I have no knowledge of calls coming and going.
So, that's all I got, I mean, she says she's reaching out, and she's doing wonders for the town, I differ, but we'll see what goes on from here on, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robideau.
Madam Chair, let me just make a comment, that if the public in general has any question about accessibility to our office or to the town manager's office, and they're having a difficult time getting through, I have never received a telephone call myself saying that there has been a problem getting through to the office, if there is, please call one of the Board of Selectmen and let us know about that, and we will ask the questions and pursue it.
And through the chair, you know, I will go back and check again, I did check on Friday, and as of Friday, there were no calls, I'm happy to go back and check again.
We're still under public comment, Mr. Page.
Wayne Page, 900 Common Road, I've been wondering for a while, and I haven't brought it up, but I was going to do the last couple of meetings, and I still didn't bring it up because I forgot, but I would just like to know, how many people get packets to this meeting other than the Board of Selectmen, because I see that Joe Hamill comes up here all the time, he gets a packet from you before the vote or anything on the issues, I mean, could you explain to me why? Why that happens?
I...
As a resident and a taxpayer, I'd like to know...
Absolutely, I can get the information, I know Board of Selectmen members get the packets, I know the press gets the packets, I know that...
But I understand the press do, but I'd like to know why Joe Hamill gets a packet, and he's a red hensent, maybe that's why he gets it, but the articles aren't even voted on, and I would think you wouldn't pass them out to everybody until it's voted on.
I'm happy to get that information, it's not on the agenda, but I, and I shouldn't even be venturing a guess, but I'm guessing, because it goes on local cable access, which Mr. Hamill is a member of the committee, and the entire agenda, and the entire packet, anything that we have is...
Which goes through Mr. Hugo, which Joe is not even the chairman of the committee, and, I don't know, I could be wrong, but I'm just questioning it, why?
It's always best to have accurate information rather than misinformation out there.
Thank you.
So, we'll get that information. Is there anything else? We have the minutes of September 9, 2013, are there any corrections or omissions? If there's nothing else before the board, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Good day.